Get started. I guess it's being recorded.
... with liberty and justice for.
Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to this agenda as presented? Is there some further discussion on those labor votes in line? Item three is consent agenda. Is it bringing to record the accounts annual coming May twenty ninth, three June twenty fifth, and the Board of Trustees meeting minutes from June first, twenty twenty one? Does anyone on the board have something to bring for this special needs?
No.
All right. I move approval. What I think important is PPRPA citizen advisory committee appointment. Craig Gooding, who is here today. Craig, if you wanted to say a couple of words about yourself and why you want to represent us.
Okay. Thank you for offering me the opportunity. I've lived in the area for over twenty years, living in Green Mountain Falls now for almost five years. Been very involved in particularly at the church in the Wildwood in a number of things over there. I love the town. Been involved in transportation work through my business, through my job for five or six years now. And so, you know, I feel like I have something to bring to, to the committee.
Well, I personally will just throw that you'll be on there. PPRPA is a very dynamic group, and I think we actually make a real impact on all of our communities. So, do you have any questions for us?
All right.
Board. Let's see. We didn't need an action on this, as I thought we did. So, something we want to approve? Yes. A member? I was a favor, but I say hi. Hi. I am. Oh, she passes. Thank you very much. Item five is the Board of Trustees seat vacancy and trustee resignation. As you know, trustee Lou submitted her resignation stating that it just took more time than she had anticipated. And as you know, from past history and from what we have been supplied from our clerk, we have a power to appoint vacancies on the board.
And I want to clarify, that is appointing to fill the vacancies through the end of her term. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And when does her term expire? In, in three years, two years? How long she's been on? Okay. So, the appointment that we made, that term will expire in two thousand and twenty four.
All right. And so, this time they have, um, vacancy posted. We have already received one application. Thank you very much. And this will be open how long?
We have a sixty day period from the, the middle of written notice to or an election. And so, my suggestion and recommendation to the board was to pursue an appointment to avoid excessive, uh, excessive election costs. But if that sixty days and we don't have an appointment at the end of those sixty days, we have reasonable time, but we would still have to order an election.
Probably what we need to do is appoint by the next meeting in July.
That will be the goal.
That will be so much freedom.
To receive resumes and applications and then review those in the packet. Give the interviews at the meeting and even possibly do the appointment at the meeting. Well, and then we can serve the office at the following meeting after that. That would be the first thing I'm suggesting.
But as long as, as long as we do the appointment prior to that, we're within the sixty day.
Yes.
All right. Okay. And let's see. Another question. Oh, um, they can get the application and whatnot from you?
Yeah, directly to me, um, clerk gmfco.us, or they could go to the forms page on our website and download that committee volunteer form. That will satisfy this time for an application since it's not an elected position, it's an appointed position. And then I'm also requesting resumes. I just think it enhances the application process to get a little bit of background on the person.
Or may I have any further questions? All right. So, that is open and we'll be pursuing that further. Um, and if correspondence or maybe we can receive, um, the correspondence that is submitted. Reports. So, conducted meeting, how they predicted, moving right along. So, trustee reports. Well, Margaret, let's start with you, please.
Um, yeah, I'd like to report a little bit on managed parking and a couple of the hiccups that we've had and some of the, some of the correspondence and comments indicating that, that the parking was pushed through rather quickly. I'd like to review again the timetable that we took in this process. Just, and, and this report is available from the May, um, the May eighteenth minutes as well. So, if anybody wants to look that up, to read it for themselves, they can. But in the summer of twenty twenty, pro bono services from John Keane were secured to conduct a parking and signage study. And he, he acted as a consultant. He managed that for us and very, very appreciated pro bono costs, so non-costs. The timeline for the initial meeting. So, the initial meeting between the town staff and the consultant was eight, one, twenty twenty. The letter to the initial stakeholder group was eight, twenty, twenty twenty. The interview process with the stakeholders was from August twentieth to September twenty fifth of twenty twenty. There was a workshop on September twenty sixth of twenty twenty. Um, there was a GoCo Resilient Communities Trail Grant Application on October the eighth. There was a community mail notice of the forum and survey on December the fifth. There was a community forum and a Board of Trustees presentation on December the fifteenth. Um, the community survey was open from December the fifth, twenty twenty to January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Interviews with the survey respondents happened from, um, December the fifth. And this says to the present, so prior to the, the implementation of the, of the managed parking. There was participation agreement from December fifth through the present. There was a trails committee meeting presentation on January the twenty fifth of twenty twenty one. Um, data analysis happened from January twentieth through February first of twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. There was a draft plan for developing an alternative policy analysis, February first to February tenth. There was a second community forum and presentation and recommendations to the Board of Trustees on February the sixteenth. A final report was submitted on March the second. The request for managed parking proposals went out on March the second after all of the presentations, all of the analysis, and after the board feeling that like this was something that we were ready to pursue. The review of proposals and contract negotiation stage started on, in April of twenty twenty one. Um, and the staff recommendations, the contract and the project rollout presentation to the board was on May the fourth, twenty twenty one, with an anticipated rollout in May. However, we took that meeting, we took the next meeting in May, and we took the first meeting in June to really consider everyone's comments, everyone's opinions on it, um, you know, to look at the pros and cons and truly make an informed decision. So, I just wanted to remind everyone that, that this was a lengthy process, it was a detailed process. It was a costly process, but we were able to save a large amount of money because of the services that were rendered on our behalf. And I just really like to remind people of that, that, you know, we, we didn't just run into this overnight and, and we didn't take this decision lightly. And personally, for me, it had nothing to do with revenue. I wasn't even looking at dollar signs or thinking about the revenue potential. I am very, very pleased that our town manager was able to negotiate a fifty fifty share. The normal contract that this company does is seventy thirty, and our manager was able to negotiate a fifty fifty. And generally, it would have been thirty percent for the town. So, she was able to negotiate a higher amount of revenue from the income that this, that this does. Moving forward, which is like my mantra from COVID on, we have to move forward. A lot of this was in response to what we all know is the town being overrun. Too much stress on our facilities. This year, we have facilities that we're able to offer because we have some, some additional grant money because of COVID and we qualified to use that for those purposes. Um, and I've just spent a couple of weeks in the last couple of weeks. Now, I do know, and I'm one of the people that's a little discouraged with the really big signs that have been put up. Um, I have been assured that Interstate is aware of this and they're aware of, of other citizens' response to those signs as well. And they will be removing those at the end of the week and replacing them with smaller signs. But on the flip side of that, the other, the other thing I've been made aware of is the reason they put those ginormous signs there is because people were stealing the other signs. Is that ridiculous? It's like, you know, it, it just, it crosses a line between the kiosk being stolen the very first night and people removing the signs. It just crosses a line and, and it's embarrassing. You know, it's just, it's just embarrassing and it's shameful and, and we don't want that to happen. So, I don't blame them for putting ginormous signs that people can't walk away with up, even though they're a little bigger than what we expected or what we needed, um, but they're working with us. And another point I'd like to bring out with the managed parking as far as the, the company working with us. I had a discussion last week with our town manager about broad day because I was concerned about what was going to do. I knew, I knew that we had options, but to figure out what option we could use for parking for broad day. And we came up with a beautiful solution. We're going to validate parking at our information booth at the Chamber booth during broad day. So, anybody that's there, that's registered can come to the booth and we'll validate it. I still have to talk to Angie and figure out if it's going to be bring us your ticket or if it's going to be sign up on our sheet or, you know, we'll, we'll figure out what Interstate wants us to do. But I'm really pleased with the ease that we were able to come up with a solution to a big event. And I really want to encourage people that we're able and willing when there are events happening, if there's something going on at celibation, if there's a wedding for the day, if there's another activity like the car show, you know, the car show unfortunately wasn't able to get it together this year. I reached out to him and talked to him. They're going to hopefully bring some car show people up for broad day, for the parade and to hang around. But also, he's going to come and look and see what we did for parking because he had questions about how it was going to work. And, you know, it's just, it's something that, that I really feel positive about. And I just, I just think that they were giving me the right decision. We didn't go into this decision quickly. We weren't uninformed, you know, we took the time, we listened to residents, and we made the decision based on that. So, thank you.
Well, I'd like to pick up where Margaret left off the, uh, the business owners have some concerns about, you know, contractors or say women who play at or, you know, anywhere else, how this parking gets validated. Because one of the business owners doesn't have Wi-Fi, so is, he's, he's kind of at a loss of how he would, you know, call them somebody's license. I think.
You can do that on the phone.
On the phone?
Oh, yeah.
Anytime of.
Yeah.
During, during the parking time, during Friday through Sunday. Anytime the parking is, okay. Yeah.
And, you know, I've, I've noticed that Interstate, if they are busy, uh, if you leave a message, they'll get back to you within the day at the most. Uh, but fifty percent of the time, they're, they answer fifty percent of the time you leave a message. But they're, they're responsive and they will, if they have those license plate numbers, it's easy, easy. We also have special loading zones for, for each business owner that requests them. Um, and then those spots, you know, and lots of times the bands, we talk to them about the bands loading and unloading. Um, and we, because it ends at five, most of them don't start setting up till like six o'clock. And so, there wouldn't be a problem anyway. Yeah. And even with the, the two hours free, even if they got there at three, they still wouldn't have an issue. And they, they have a loading zone too.
And, you know, I have one other thought. Can we clarify for residents that once they're registered for parking, they do still need to sign into the kiosk if they're going to be parking in the area during those times? And that's how everything is monitored. Is that correct?
That's been.
That's my understanding.
Um, in practice, that's what I did, um, just to go test it out and see how it functions.
Sure. Sure.
Sure. And I think that was a question that, that came up to me is do they, when they're registered, do they have to put their license tag in? Seems pretty easy.
Yeah. No, because that way you'll get a warning. And because in my mind, that's why you're going to get a warning if you're not registered at the kiosk because that's what they're checking for. Right. But if you're, if you're not registered at all, even if you have free parking as your resident, if you're not registered in the parking spot, they're, they're checking for people who are registered. That's why somebody's going to get a warning because they never registered. And that makes sense to me. So.
And if they forget and they do receive a warning on ticket, they're registered, we can, we can not take it. But if they just do that thing, they'll void out.
I think it's just a general, general understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's only been two weeks. So, there are still, there are still, like, everything.
Yeah, I'm surprised that you have to register at the kiosk because I would think that if your license plate has been registered, that it would positively show up as a registered license plate.
I don't know.
After clarification, the, um, the, there's round the place of the kiosk from selling of Salibu. And, uh, and so folks that we're trying to use, you know, it says pay here, but it doesn't say, or I think the sign also says, um, you know, we're paying the kiosk, but it doesn't tell you where the kiosk is. And it's not visible at that point.
Yeah.
I'm looking down with my eyes.
It wasn't close enough because I saw there was a stand at the pool.
Yeah. There's not one there, and there's one across the way.
I think the lighting we were trying to.
I think that would maybe, you know, because we're, we're planning to, to. But there is, um, the, the issue with, um, the cell phone reception with folks that are trying to use that. And so, probably just going to the kiosk.
Right.
So, so we don't see a kiosk. I, I can see why they'd be frustrated about.
I have found that, that part of the, in the state, partners may be very understanding and very thoughtful.
Right. Yeah. And I, I wasn't sure I needed to register.
I didn't think so either. So, Margaret, it would be, you had a different one. And I think we just think it's very hard for everyone.
Yeah. I think it would be really nice if we didn't have to do that. I think particularly of, of people that might have a hard time, um, you know, ambulating to the kiosks, especially if they're far, you know, a couple of blocks away.
They offer placards or symbols or something?
Um, I, I can check in with them about that. I know that they do offer those options in other places and stuff.
Okay.
And but, um, I can see what kind of solutions.
Even if it's like a fee, if somebody wants the convenience of that, if it's like a five dollar fee from the year.
Just like a convenience thing.
Or something, just to, to cover the cost, I mean.
Right.
It's like a moment. We'll get it taken care of and all that. And we'll get a public communication out about what we're saying. Stay ahead of it, try to.
So, I'm just, you know, asking my own questions as well as, as those that, that.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, the hours are helpful. You know, the fact that it is that Friday is the only weekday, so if somebody did have, you know, was doing business with a contractor or whatever, that would be the one where it, it may be an issue. So, so clarification of how things, how receipt might be validated would be really helpful. That might be a lot easier to make in those phone calls if that was an option. And then I just wanted to, um, say that the Hikes Peak Chamber, um, just placed flowers at the Triangle Island. The chamber spoke with Justin on the street. He suggested several areas, but that's where the chamber decided to adopt, just to adopt at least for now.
We're trying to not make it your buffet.
So, I think that's.
That together with the chamber, it was nice to see flowers in town. Since Mr. Vazey's letter was submitted as correspondence, I actually had the opportunity to respond to some of that because it's not what it comes, it's what it's called or by. So, I wanted to address a few things that are very much policies, just, just not quite accurate. First of all, my supplemental that inexperienced trustees can cause issues is we know we're born, overwhelmed or cynical. That comes from many years of experience and education on this subject. We did see in the not too distant past, time when the town came dangerously close to bankruptcy from an inexperienced clerk combined with a governance board. It's a real danger and my assertions come from experience. If we have many in our community with managerial, supervisory, and HR experiences, I read, well, we're on the, we've asked for many leaders to help on the board. Do we have generations of successful town governments? Well, that's a yes and a no. Sometimes very successful, sometimes very unsuccessful. Sometimes we had volunteers who were great and experienced and happy to help. And other times, we've had volunteers who didn't attend meetings, didn't care what was happening, abused the staff, and were generally a poor fit. They look nostalgically that everything was rosy and gray prior to the town manager being in place. This solution was a good behavior in our history. If you really want to dive into what historically the town has had, well, here's the town staff that we have had historically. Town clerk who functioned as a manager. In fact, we asked a particular clerk, she wanted to be named manager and she declined the title. She was slated to work four hours a week, usually worked sixty. We had a deputy clerk at the same time. She was scheduled for twenty to thirty hours a week, usually worked about forty. Volunteer clerk, this is all at the same time. She was scheduled for about forty, for twenty hours volunteer, usually worked about forty. We had a marshal, quite often a deputy marshal, and three to seven volunteers. Public Works, most recently was one full-time, three part-time, one to two seasonal, plus the volunteers or restitution workers. And let me be clear about the part-time. Depending on the time of year, they worked anywhere from ten hours a week to sixty. The claim that we were fine before staffing is neither accurate nor realistic. It was simple to expect more and more on the backs of people who were historically unappreciated. And citizens by and large expect more and more in an increasingly complicated world. For example, historically, and I mean about twenty-five years ago, we had a public works manager who didn't start filing before eight a.m. And I mean ever, dating and this when he started. Then we got a new public works manager and his standard was to always be up by five a.m. if the weather was bad. And the people got very used to that level of service. And when that manager threw left, well, since then, we've struggled to keep up with that pay that's needed for that and that level of experience in that position. And this lowered the expectations of more and more of the level of service. I've said this before and I will repeat this. We have to ask the question of the trustees in a public meeting and then you have to wait two more weeks to have an answer at another public meeting. That doesn't meet the level of service that a town manager does. Turnover was addressed. And I will say this, in my experience, a lot of the turnover we've had recently can be explained, maybe explained by bullying and entitled attitudes that are quite often displayed on social media. All the town employees and volunteers struggle to stay motivated with what feels to be a constant fashion. We don't need to become members of the mean girls club. We don't have to. We can be better than this. And I don't mean just people here. You know, we can't control other people's behavior, but we can control how we respond to things. We don't need to be in the mean girls club. The town manager system has worked well. We have an actual person in place to supervise the employees and the town operations. We have staff who's authorized to answer questions. They used to wait for the board members. The board members have been able to address and change policy. And policy is the board's responsibility. The board members should not be addressing one of the day-to-day operations. The liaison model kept the town in a quiet mire for years and resulted in many poor decisions and many poor operations. The liaisons, as I, as I have said, were great, some not so great. But the consistent thing that happened was we stayed in the same place as municipality for years, always complaining there was too much work and not enough money. With a manager in place, the board moved ahead instead of always looking to stay afloat from one day to the next. And we, as a board, have not been ignoring the concrete and the plan. Instead, we've been able to address items one by one along with the town staff. Additionally, I would counter the dol and search that have a very interested. Additionally, I would counter the dol and search that have a very interested, out in, very vested interest in the outcome and the success of our town, success far beyond examining one person's salary. When that one person, that is the manager, is there to administer grants, not just apply for them, the town has a lot more opportunity to be successful financially. When a person's in place who can supervise employees, not just hire them and hope they can direct themselves as we've had to do in the past, that's success. And when that professional person can represent us in professional meetings throughout the state and keep us recognized as an actual town and not some forgotten backwater, that is success. When that one person can keep us current and vital and on track, that's a success. Go back to when every election was a risk as to who had experience, and the town's success depends on what they may or may not know in the legal or government world? No, thank you.
And can I say, I won't name who the employee was that got out real late to pull the roads, but I remember times that my car would get stuck in the snow in front of my house, and I remember thinking, oh, I'll ask him to help pull it out when he comes by. And it was usually anywhere between eleven and one, that my car would get help getting pulled out of the snow, so.
I mean, we are honestly moving in the right direction. I think it's very wise to have a board who can lead a board. And I think it's been wonderful to have a professional staff who's here. And I do believe, my safe harbor experience, that our prior staff will also be pretty pleased to see the direction we've gone. All right, no committee reports?
I believe that was the fire mitigation committee chair would like to report on what they need to.
Excellent, they have some questions for that committee, too.
David, I'm muted. Okay, can you hear me?
That's okay.
Okay, yeah, a little difficult to, uh, hear you all, but, uh, thanks for giving me a few minutes to, uh, address the Board of Trustees and give you a little update. This is very informal. Um, I got an email from, um, Michelle Conley with CUSP this afternoon, and CUSP is, has been, um, successful in their grant application covering forty acres of Green Mountain Falls-owned and historic Green Mountain Falls-owned land. Um, and then there is still a twenty-five acre grant pending that, um, Michelle believes that they will get. So that's really good news, uh, for us. I, I do want to put in perspective that, um, in looking at some town maps, I think the Green Mountain, uh, Green Mountain Falls-owned land is over four hundred acres. So when you really think about, uh, that in perspective, this, this covers about ten percent of Green Mountain Falls-owned land. So, you know, there's still a lot to be remediated, but at least this is a start for us. The Fire Mitigation Committee is meeting tomorrow night for our monthly meeting. Michelle Conley will be joining us, and we will be talking about the priorities, uh, specifically how we want to use that money, uh, to address the many issues that we have around town in terms of, and what is the most important, uh, to address right at the moment. There had been a number of, uh, projects that were, were identified, um, at, when the grant was being, uh, developed in early two thousand twenty. So we'll be addressing that list of priorities, whether it's, um, continuing on the Thomas Trail or, um, uh, spending the money on, uh, rights of way or other, other areas. Uh, the Fire Mitigation Committee has been working on developing a map, uh, and that again is in conjunction with CUSP. Um, that map is to identify and, and, uh, have a way of grading the risk factors, or at least the, the, the riskiest areas for fire in our town. That is underway. We're also, um, including in that map, the areas of town which have already been remediated either by private landowners or on, on, uh, public lands, um, and pending mitigation. So we'll be able to have a comprehensive look at our town in terms of, uh, where the riskiest areas are, where we've already done mitigation, and that will help guide us in the future as to where we really need to, uh, put our emphasis in terms of, uh, spending those dollars that are available to us either through grants or budgeted monies, uh, by the town. So that's just a brief and very informal update for everybody. We'll hope to tell you more, uh, after our next meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
All right, Mark, did you have a question? Yeah, David, where are you guys meeting at? Will it be here at Town Hall?
We, we are still meeting by Zoom, and I, um, help me out here, Matt. Are we, uh, do we have a meeting space at, at Town Hall?
We can meet in the board chambers anytime we schedule meetings. Um, but I think if I'm a little bit, we're still planning. I guess, I don't know, is that a town? I don't know if people are back in town or something like that. Did you hear me? Can you hear me, David?
No, I can't. It's very garbled.
Um, so I'll talk louder. Uh, yeah, so we can meet in the board, uh, room anytime, uh, when we schedule meetings. Um, and then I'll also offer the Zoom as a secondary option, but I just, I couldn't remember the exact reason why we weren't meeting in person this time.
Um, well, I, I think that one of the, um, elements that we put in our, uh, bylaws was that the, uh, meetings could be held, continue to be held in combination as a Zoom meeting and in-person.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I was agreeing with you, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
David, can we ask for a, um, a map, even a rough map, when you guys make your decisions about what is going to be mitigated first?
Oh, absolutely, yes. We, we will, and after we've, uh, had our meeting tomorrow night to really rough it out, we, we certainly will be able to provide that.
And will you ask, um, Michelle Conley, if they will still have, um, the ability to work with homeowners? Both survey their property and perhaps come up with some sort of discount of rates for fire mitigation? They offered that in the past.
Um, I, I will ask Michelle what, uh, they have available to help home, homeowners. I think her focus has been really for publicly owned land at this, uh, in this last series of grant applications. But when, uh, when we meet with her tomorrow, I'll ask that question.
Okay, and then just one more. We did receive a lot from Terry Carver, uh, about other mitigate or other fire mitigation opportunities. And I would just like to see somebody on your group, um, if you're talking to her or pursue more opportunities because ten percent is good, but we would like to increase that percentage as much as we can.
Yeah.
Do you have something for everyone? All right. All right, David, thanks a lot. I'm looking forward to hearing what comes out of your next meeting, that's great.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Do you have anyone on our team?
Um, not that told me that they wanted to report, but if they wanted to.
Um, I would just like to ask, um, our team for the record. We've had some very concerned citizens about the geese, both pro-geese and against-geese.
Another big divider.
Uh, but with that being said, if they can research for the, um, whose mitigation will. Tried lots of different things. One of the guys on Park, Danny, was running around chasing him off his lawn, but I don't think he must be able to do it, so.
Also, um, can we ask the, um, the possibly try to find some volunteers to help with, uh? Because there are a lot.
As a future agenda item for discussion.
Thank you. Great. All right.
Hey, so, um, I did want to provide a, a brief update on the roads. Um, they're pretty rough right now. So the regular road maintenance did resume, uh, two weeks ago. Um, we had some issues getting road base in. Everybody wants road base right now, imagine that. We have road base, our skid steer went down. It is in the shop, we rented a skid steer, road maintenance resumed. Um, so you should, over the next week or two, really see some major improvements on all roads. Um, we have prioritized some of those deeper ruts. They were on Boulder today, Boulder should be, it's looking pretty good right now, but we start at two, two guys. Does take three guys to really effectively do the roads in a, in a expeditious, um, efficient manner. That's the word I'm looking for.
What's the process? Is it laying down the base, doing water, dumping water? And then.
Yep.
So, so just so that, that people understand what the process is, too, that it's not just a dry mine.
Absolutely.
It's time.
Does, it takes time. So when, when, once you dump the dirt, you have to spread the dirt before you can grade it and roll it. Um, and there needs to be water before it's rolled as well, so that it compacts better. Um, and then it's less likely to run off in the rain quite as much as it has been. So it, it does take, uh, three people.
I'm, I'm asking, how does Magcora come in? Because I know we have that.
So we do an application of that in the spring and in the fall. Um, and that, that keeps the dust down, from what I understand. Definitely not an expert on Magcora, but it keeps the dust down.
It doesn't help when we, when we.
Compaction.
So it does help when we.
Yeah, and it's definitely giving, some schools talk about volumes, Magcora. In the city, they use it a lot because it's an ice, um, preventer, you know? But here, it's, it's more as a.
Stabilizer?
Yeah, stabilizer. And depending on what grade of pressure fine bit is the road base, depends on.
You guys know, I know. I didn't know until right now.
And on that note, we have offered a position to someone for the public works position. And, um, we, they've agreed to start in a part-time position July nineteenth. So we will have three people mid-month. Big difference from where we've, um, we've been two years with two guys, and they work split shifts to get their stuff done, especially.
Thank you, incredible job. I just really want to probably acknowledge and thank them as much as we can because they really, they work their tails off for this town.
They do, they really do. And we're super lucky, and I, I hope people realize that. Um, and then, uh, you know, if they like the position, they're, they're going to come on full-time August first. So we'd have three people this winter.
So one of the.
For the first time. The first time. For the first time ever in the winter, since I've been here for the whole two years that I've been here, this winter, the, the guys wouldn't have to work split shifts.
Potential.
And that's a really big deal.
And we're still looking for seasonal, right?
Absolutely.
No. So, um, what else do you think we can do to, um, get the word out there and to encourage people to apply?
We have put it.
Anything and everything.
I have a question.
I know.
My first response is, uh, raise wages, because that seems to be the most common reason why people are turning down the jobs, and that hamstrings us quite a bit when we're competing with larger communities.
Offering retirement as well. And people not yelling at the road. That's really important. I'm just gonna throw that out there.
Austin, and really good volunteers from how they get treated.
Yeah.
They don't deserve that.
So, challenging news, good news, that's all I got. Oh, yeah.
I, I get to be the, the pool secretary. Angie graciously lets me do this one. So I just want to touch on first and foremost, I misspoke earlier on the appointment, and I want to make sure I correct this on my computer and make sure everybody can hear me on the Zoom and the two people who are here. Um, yes, I'm sorry.
Still makes credit.
That's a future, like a town, like a town manager right there. Um, the appointment will only go until the next regular election until April of next year, not till twenty twenty-four. And I'll just make sure I didn't misspeak, but I got it from, uh, Call Letter Advice Statutes thirty-one, that's four, that's three, three. Literally what I put in your mouth. And so I want to make sure I clear that up right out the gate.
So. Okay. I've been on it way longer than I needed to be on.
That means you're gonna run again.
Um, and I also have a quick report unless, yeah, questions or anything here comes up, uh, on Zoom. So, uh, after testing this apparatus that are a first in-person meeting in June, of course, you could tell we've made some changes to try and make this more efficient. I, I feel like I can manage this in meetings while also being able to take my minutes, you know, respond to questions and report on the things that are after agenda items, and so I'm totally comfortable here with this. But what I want to get from the public is just, uh, feedback on how well this is running. David had said just a second ago that he couldn't really hear all that well, and so I could maybe buy a microphone or things like that to improve this experience. So I mean, we can offer this as an option for people who can't come or who are photo-attended in a digital session. And do you know what it actually is? Yeah, headsets and, yes, um, all sorts of great ideas to try and just improve that. So I just wanted to make sure I touch on why we're doing Zoom this time around. It seems like an effective option, and I can't make sure. The, the last one, approval update. Uh, we've reached out on many channels, called, we've posted digitally. I received four total applications for the pool attendant positions, which is effectively our launch starts. Of the four, one was qualified. Um, the other ones, we could try and work out training plans, but the vast majority of their experience just did not line up with what this position was asking for, and a few of them were out of state. Um, and so the one person that, uh, I found was qualified, interviewed, and made an offer to, um, she was not interested in the position, unfortunately. And so the factors involved in this, um, we can't hire people to staff the pool. We've also ran into an issue where, um, our well has collapsed, where we would pull water from the pool. This creates.
Not just the pump. Originally, the issue was with the pump, right?
So they went in to fix the pump, the well is completely collapsed.
Yes.
We would need to dig a new well. We can use steady water to fill the pool, it will cost a little bit more with that as an option to.
Right.
Until we get another one.
But at, at this point, and I'm, I'm scared to say this out loud, but it just has to be said, is I, I, we're gonna have to just not open. It's not gonna be possible. The current, uh, issues in people applying for jobs, and it seems like a lot of other community pools and areas that are looking to hire lifeguards are dealing with this very same.
So because we have, um, money budgeted for the pool, can we still pursue what we need to pursue this year with that budgeted money? And, and instead of using it to pay employees, use it to do what we need to do so that we, we can be proactive for next year?
Okay, yeah, I think that would be.
We can look into the cost of re-drilling the well, because I think that could be very, very expensive. Um, so we can look into the cost of that and, and get that rolling.
And have some ideas, yeah.
And also look at the boiler. Boiler works, but every year before I got on.
So the trick boilers, my dad tinkered around every single week on those when he was the trustee in charge of the pool. He was constantly down there fixing stuff.
We would have to fill it, fill it to test those out.
Right, right, yeah. So, yeah, it's a very hard way of making sure. So, yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's feasible for us to reallocate those already budgeted items, and instead of doing it, um, is that something we should, we could vote on? For the reallocation. But in the reallocation. Right, because it's still, it's still structured. Because we all have the overhead of salaries and everything that goes along with that. We can, we can do it all to maintenance this year. And hopefully, that will, it probably will end up, but at least it'll help us not dig deeper than the pool.
And so, I will say in my professional, um, we've really struggled trying to get on the boards. And that's the only pool. It's been, it's been hard as well. Down college, we didn't come. Yeah, you think that means all the others come on, you gotta reconsider.
I don't know what it's gonna cost, but I would like to find out what it would cost to, um, improve the system of the pool. So that we can perhaps open it in public.
Also a good question. I mean, yeah, there's a lot of things we could do with that.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
You know, we're, we're, we're looking at bringing it up to change of compliance as well. But I think that would be, it'd be nice if we could grow up the cost for.
So, we can anticipate. The grid might, the future.
Right. And, uh. I have a question about, um, I don't know what the policy was in the past when people rented the pool for private parties. So, there were white garrets?
Yes, you had white garrets. And you paid, um, cool, and you paid for like salads all over there.
Okay, so you, you had to have two, or was there?
Typically, try to have two white garrets. Three is ideal when it's really busy, but you have to have two.
Okay.
If for no reason, you get pool blindness, where you just stare at the pool all the time.
I was just thinking it might be, um, you know, might generate additional revenue if we really promoted the pool for private parties.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's something that we necessarily done with the past, but, um.
I think that's smart. And also, um, other things in the past, including water rotors, sometimes we get some folks to do that. And also lessons, yeah. And in the past, we have white garrets to teach lessons and make money off the side. But it's just a good thing for.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity to learn. And, um, the film, what was that?
Yeah, the diving room thing. Oh, that was fun. That was fun. We had a couple of diving rooms. Showed John one night and.
Yeah, I don't know what we had in the way of equipment to do that, but we're, um, you know, the screen filling. But, um, I don't think I was there the second time.
I forget what's happening.
I think we might have borrowed something. But it, but it might be worthwhile to, to invest in something, you know, so, so that we had something in-house.
The screen was a sheet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to.
We tend to hide that.
But, um, just to make it relatively easy. Yeah, I, I guess I'm just thinking.
Some great options for next year to, like, goals to.
That's, that's some ways to promote the pool. Just, you know, see what community interest is in those things.
Well, well, I want to see this conversation as opening up the, the restrooms for public use. Even if we upgrade the stuff, um, seeing how our other westerns are failing with the old ones. I just really want to be confident that the system, whatever happens, can handle it. And we really need to, like, really overestimate whatever use it's gonna make, make sure it can handle it. You know, to be prepared, because we don't wanna set money on upgrading the system and then kind of flushed out in the first year because of one of those.
Right.
I'm, I'm really, I'm hesitant for, for the idea of, oh, for, for. I know we can't feasibly do it now, because the system is so old and we're just not handling it.
Right, but then, there's also a possibility of, you know, not, it not being open all the time. But maybe, you know, during heavier times, I guess.
Well, and part of that is also gonna depend on how many employees do that pool. Because if we have somebody who has a small bathroom, so, and, but we can cross that bridge. And we do, we do have the opportunity to build another bathroom down there, like it looks like.
Are those coming?
So, I would talk about, yeah.
That was on my report.
Well, you know, it's good to have, uh, to have an open discussion, uh, for regarding the water. Virgil, did Virgil have a report?
Um, let me see. Virgil, do you hear us? Can you hear me?
Well, you see, anything can happen. Did you have a comment?
Some of the new homes in the area.
Did I hear my name mentioned?
Yeah, Virgil, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now.
Do you have a staff report?
Actually, I don't really have a staff report. But I do have a couple of comments. I am right now personally in New Mexico, getting to see my grandpa. Felt this meeting was important enough for me to get on. I want to call out some of, not by name, some of the people in the local press for misrepresentation, misquoting me, and things like that. The local press indicated that I spoke out with pros over the, uh, managed parking. I did not. All I've ever done is tried to clear up misconceptions, rumors, and the things that I felt like people should know to be fact, instead of just rumors. It's fairly obvious by the lack of some people that are very vocal on social media. They're obvious by their absence tonight. There's people that are here that are very vocal in opposition to public parking, and I commend them for coming here to do that. It's easy to hide behind a keyboard. It's easy, when you're anonymous, to type stuff that isn't true, that isn't correct, and honestly, is downright falsehoods. I grew up a country boy, and I will always be a country boy. And part of that is being honest, being forthwith, and explaining myself and my position. There is, or there are, excuse me, I reverted country talk. There are things that are out there that are not entirely true. It's easy to jump on social media and raise cane about things that are going on without first checking into what can be done about them. The signs that are, in my opinion, way oversized, way too many, are coming down Friday. As the town manager already spoke to. It doesn't take a bunch of slamming people and, quite honestly, some slander going on to get something accomplished. I got called a Nazi two weeks ago, because I was pursuing the guy, or a guy, or a people who stole the kiosk. I will continue to pursue them. I am not influenced by somebody calling me a Nazi. I'd be happy to show them my DD 214, what I did, and where I've been, and what I've done for this country. Social media is completely and totally out of control by a few individuals. It's not, it's not, uh, you, I, I, I got an email from Rocco earlier, or included on a, on a email from Rocco earlier. And he said he hate, that he hated to air this on the social media court of justice. And I agree with him. There's no sense in this. It's ridiculous. It's driven people to be beyond their, what they would normally be. It doesn't make sense, people. It just doesn't make sense. I came here and I love this town, and that's why I've stayed for almost five years now. But it's gotten to the point where some people are so willing to jump on social media and criticize everything that the town does, myself included, without knowing the facts. Why would I sit here in Las Cruces, New Mexico, and be on a town hall meeting if I didn't care? It's pretty, pretty ridiculous that the press can interpret my comments however they want to interpret them without asking me about it. We need to grow up, people. We do. We need to grow up and get back to this town that is beautiful, that has amazing people in it. And that is not at each other's throats, for heaven's sakes. We're a town of six to eight hundred people. I don't know why we are sniping at each other so bad, that it becomes where people want to leave. I mean, people come to this town and they check out the Facebook pages, they check out the social media. And it looks like we are a town of nothing but complainers. Why? Yeah, there, there's things wrong. There's things that we could do better. And we're trying to do them better. But it takes time. I mean, for heaven's sakes, there's people that are posting three minutes after something happens before it get, it can get taken care of. Why do people do that? Why do any of y'all do that? I've done nothing but tried to respond to needs, respond to things that are going on. I'm getting ready to get off the Two Green Mountain Falls pages. And they were valuable to me, because I could see what's going on. And I could, I could respond to the needs of the town, to the citizens. But it's gotten to the point where it's nothing but complaining, griping, and carrying on. There's nothing good on those pages. And if I was a visitor coming here, that's what I would look at to see if I wanted to go to this town. And feel free to jump on social media and look at what's being said. And how would you feel if that was said about Aspen or about Vale? Would you want to go there with that stuff going on? Okay, I, I'm sorry for the diatribe and everything else, but I just had to get something off my chest. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Marshall. I really, really appreciate it. I really understand in depth what you're saying. I will, I will say this one thing, and I really debated whether to say this or not, because I tend to not look over a lot on what's being said about me. But this affects the rest of the board too. There is not a single board member, including me, that has ever been paid for taking a grant. Every grant I have written, I never received a dime for. That's a lie. And I would really appreciate, if you want to ask me what I got for writing grants, I got the appreciation of the town. I never got paid. Nobody on the board has ever been paid to serve. Don't get a dime. So, just, just stop that. Um, and I agree with Marshall. Um, think about what you're saying. Because there's a huge karmic lesson in that. And think about what you're doing. And like I said before, we as a town are better than that. Now, now I'm on a roll. We as a town are better than that. When I hear comments like, well, you know why the kiosk got stolen? People were angry. You're, you're telling me that it's okay to be so mad that you can destroy someone's private property? That's okay? Who are we? If I'm, if I'm mad at Margaret, I get to go flat holler tires and it's fine because I was mad. That's terrible. We learned a long time ago in elementary school, if someone makes you mad, you don't take their grants. Come on. We're, we're better than that. And I think it's time that, that we just appreciate the people who really are the unsung, the people who don't comment because they don't want to get into it. There's a lot of really good people. And unfortunately, their voices get drowned out a lot. And, and I think it's unfortunate, because there's a lot of really good people in this town. And we can agree to disagree. We don't have to be ugly in our disagreements. We don't have to make our disagreements personal or vindictive. And you know what? Sometimes, on this side of the board, on the side of the table, we're gonna try things, because we're trying it for the best intentions of the town. We don't get a cut, no matter what people say about us, or doing it for the best thing that we can for the town.
Because contrary to popular belief, we do listen to people. And I'll tell you, the correspondence that I've had and the phone calls I've had, in the last two years, I've had maybe three personal phone calls from people. And I've had maybe four emails. And three of those have been within the last couple of months over managed parking. And I'm available to talk. I'm more than willing to talk. But I've been basically told, I don't want to talk to you. And it's sad, because people complain that we don't listen. But how can we listen if you don't talk to us and if you don't reach out to us? I have not received correspondence for anything from anyone. So, there's that.
You had a comment about.
About subjects.
Some of the newer homes in town, you know, I don't think.
Right.
Right.
It may be an option on the outside that they're comfortable with something similar. And that might be a possibility. And now we're not...
You don't have to worry about the water table too, right? Especially because that's right next to the creek.
Yeah, right next to the creek. And so maybe it's a conditional option.
Where is the bleach field? Do we know? Is it on the park side or is it... Probably because it's so ancient, it's probably just a septic. Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's nice because actually, out of bad things, like not opening the pool, we get good things and we'll have a chance to research and see what can be better. So let's keep that in mind and, you know, work together on what we can do to make that better. All right. And with that being said, for reports, item eight is public comment. And let's remind everyone that this is for items that the public wishes to speak on. You are limited to three minutes. I don't know how many people there are, but please, for brevity's sake, if you agree with another speaker, just say you don't repeat. As a reminder to both the public and the board, we don't engage on these public comments, but we can at times direct staff, and including directing staff, to put them on a user agenda. So with that being said, Matt, I'm going to turn it over to you.
So I only received one formal comment, and I'm not sure if she is actually in the meeting. Yeah, she's not. And I mean, of course, other people can comment if they'd like, but I only received the one formal sign. I'm making sure people can be heard.
How about our live audience?
They can be heard on Zoom as well. I just, you know, I'm open to receiving people. If people want to wear, just in case too, please send me emails to clerk@gmfco.us to sign up for public comment before meeting, so I can teach you on the roster in front of the members.
Well, if no one's jumping out, I would say, Nancy, thank you for working so hard with the trails volunteers. How people been everybody happy?
The ambassadors or hikers?
Everybody.
I have a very passionate, small group of volunteers that are just passionate about the trails. And we're sharing with the hikers and the hikers so appreciating the information because they're usually waiting at their phone, so they're lost on all trails, which has... You talk about disinformation. That is the worst information. They're so appreciative of having people know where the trails are, whether why it's beautiful and everything. And so, yeah, it's been doing really, really well. I think the town sees the presence of the two, and it makes it awesome because we get feedback from residents also when they're walking by. So we just based up our first month and we probably engaged and educated and guided 600 volunteers.
That's great. That is great. And it's nice because it does speak to the number of people that come here. So that's really valuable.
I've got each after each shift, I have my best, I mean, how been thought of, feedback form as far as how many hikers and if you choose, if there's any, anything that can make the program better. And I don't, I'm maybe, that's quite cheap, that's all that matters.
That's great.
As you know, I know I've talked to Andrew about this in the past, as far as any volunteer activity we have. Because when I used to volunteer down at Womond Castle, they would track our hours because that's in-kind service and that helps them with grant stuff. So I know that that helps the town for future grant endeavors, being able to monitor. Yes, this is the amount of in-kind service we have. So anybody that volunteers to do anything, we just really need to encourage them to just log the time you do to help better the town. And not only from the work that you do, but also from future, future opportunities. And if anyone knows of anyone else that would like to monitor to be four hours long, because I would be more than happy to have them come on board because we still have two more months. And like I said, I have only twelve volunteers, so we get spread open. And I do have two hour period where it's not available with volunteers. And I've only had four of us this entire month, but it's, you know, they're putting their time in.
Well, one thing to keep in mind, and we did this before COVID, this was pre-COVID. We actually had a potluck in September in the Stanley Bush Building to thank all of our volunteers. So that group would be a big part of that too.
Yeah, I asked Jesse and the PR teams to actually sort of have just our group get together. But if there's something already being done, maybe you can...
You know, anytime you can thank the volunteers and let them know they're appreciated, it's a good thing. And actually, that potluck was always kind of fun because you got to see a lot of people. And hopefully it will be post-COVID, so we can actually share all the food, which is always great around here. Virgil will speak to that.
It's good.
So we have got nobody else in the conference. All right, well, at this time, we should move into an executive session, which means that it's one of two things. Since we have a rather small audience and you would like to wait for the... We need to do our... Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. This is presented to CRS 246428, the purpose of matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategy for negotiations.